I would call the meeting of the Select Board, April 9th, 2024, to order. Note, this meeting is being televised, streamed, or recorded by Bourne TV. If anyone in the audience is recording or videotaping, they need to acknowledge such at this time. Use of flash photography during Select Board meetings is prohibited. If anyone from the public wishes to access the meeting, they can do so by calling the following conference line, 1-929-205-6099. I didn't see anyone acknowledge recording right now. The Zoom meeting ID is 869-5775-5505, and the password is B-O-U-R-N-E. The Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak must raise the hand icon, and to the panel, the chair asks them to unmute. All items within the meeting agenda are subject to deliberation and votes. I will call the public session to order an open session with a moment of silence to recognize our troops and public safety personnel. Salute to the flag.
Alleged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reading of the Select Board vision.
Sure.
Jared?
Bourne is a proud community that embraces change while respecting the rich heritage of the town and its villages. It is a municipality based on strong fiscal government, with a durable economy that recognizes the rights of all citizens, respects the environment, especially the coastal areas of the community, and the amenities that it affords. Bourne embraces excellent education and offers two citizens a healthy, active lifestyle.
Permission?
Bourne will maximize opportunities for social and economic development while retaining an attractive, sustainable, and secure coastline environment for the enjoyment of residents and visitors, through responsible and professional leadership, and in partnership with others, Bourne will strive to improve the quality of life for all residents living in, working in, or as their community.
Thank you. Peter, next item on the agenda is community shout-out in recognition. I have four things. Shout-out to the Bourne High School volleyball girls volleyball team, who held a fundraiser for the food pantry and raised $250 for groceries, which were presented to the food pantry on April 4th. Congratulations to Jane Norton, Bourne Intermediate School Principal, who will be retiring at the end of the school year, and welcome to Noel Colbert, who will be the new principal starting July 1st. Mark your calendars for the 23rd Annual Cape Cod Canal Cleanup Day on April 20th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Information is on the iSwim page on the town website. And thanks to Erica and Mike in the Finance Department, and DPW Director Matt for completing all the paperwork to finalize the SRF loan for the Buzzards Bay Water Treatment Plant. Anyone else?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Thank you. Next item is public comment on non-agenda items. Public comments are allowed for up to a total of 12 minutes at the beginning of each meeting. Each speaker is limited to three minutes for comment. Board members are unable to respond due to posting requirements of the open-meeting law. Is there anyone here for public comment? Seeing none. Next item is comprehensive wastewater management plan, presentation by Environmental Partners, and discussion. Welcome, Helen.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kate Rosa. I'm a project manager with Environmental Partners. I'm joined today by Helen Gordon, also with Environmental Partners, and we're here today to give you an update on the draft recommended plan. I'm setting my timer now for 13 minutes, because I want to get through it so I can leave more time for questions. If the clicker will cooperate. Let me connect. Yeah. It's Bluetooth, so it didn't connect again.
Great. You broke it.
Uh-oh. I'm stopping my timer. I jinxed myself. I'm stopping that stopwatch. I'll try it again. All right. Perfect. Thank you, Liz. All right. Restart the clock. Anyway, so my goal today is to do a quick, quick recap of where we left off last time we spoke together, and then jump right into draft recommended plan, and walk through what we have drafted, and all of the different components we have so far. So, where did we leave off? We last did the alternatives analysis in December 2022. We were prioritizing based on the needs assessment, and we worked with the Wastewater Advisory Committee, as well as the Select Board, to meet the removal goals as we had stated in the needs assessment. So where did that conclude? We did analysis for traditional alternatives, which resulted in the core sewer area alternative, a specific targeted area in Buttermilk Bay, and the general-use IA onsite systems. We did a comprehensive non-traditional analysis, which is the image at the right, which brought up the top four. The caveat is that general-use IA systems became a conventional technology while we were doing our alternatives. So the other non-traditional that remain are the pilot and provisional IA systems, formerly enhanced IA systems, the IA hybrid, which is two or more systems that are onsite technologies on one site, stormwater BMPs or best management practices, and compact and open-space development. A little note there is, it's going to be utilized as it's applicable. Not every parcel in Bourne, nor every development in Bourne, is going to be compatible with compact open-space development, depending on what it is. So that is the recap of the alternatives analysis. Before I go any further, any quick... We'll keep going. So, the overview of the draft recommended plan that we've prepared to date is, I'm going to caveat, these are the instructions overview. All of the costs are conceptual, and that means that they can be as low as half of what we have listed, or as much as double what we have listed. Because of the level of design that we have at the moment, they're considered conceptual level costs. So they will evolve as you sharpen your pencils, so to speak, and come up with a more specific plan. All of the plans, and I'll get into why they're plural, prioritize the Tier 1 watersheds, which are the TMDL watersheds, McGan's, Squatique Harbor, and Finney's Harbor, also known as the natural resource nitrogen-sensitive areas that were recently designated by the new Title V changes. After prioritization was given to Tier 1, then Tier 2 watersheds were all beginning the same year, in year 6. These are the three remaining nitrogen-impaired watersheds that don't have a TMDL, but that Bourne has targeted a 25% nitrogen removal rate across these three. So the goal was, beginning in year 1 of the plans, we'll plural, I'll get to that, targeting the 2 TMDL watersheds, then in year 6, moving into the remaining watersheds for implementation. And this is where the plan piece comes in. What we have drafted, based on feedback that was given earlier in this process, we did look at the two different approaches for the timeframe. So for Title V implementation, that assumed front-loading, only being able to complete the 2 Tier 1 watersheds within the first five years, in order to meet the existing systems requirement under Title V. So essentially, that means it was front-loaded for any of those IA implementation plans. The watershed permit tier, or the watershed permit timeline assumes that you can spread out all of the Tier 1 upgrades over five years and beyond. So you're spreading out over more time, over the period of a watershed permit, which is 20 years.
Could I ask to interrupt this program for just a second? I'd like you to be able to come up and introduce yourself, so you don't have to sit for a really long time. You better... I'm going to move forward, just consent agenda item...
Stop that timer.
Stop the timer.
This common victoler for seaside scoops and grill located 100 Main Street, previously mixed main scoop. Would you just like to introduce yourself?
Yes. Hi, everyone. Thank you for giving me the time to come up and introduce myself. My name's Justine Dory. I'm from, actually, Dartmouth, and this has been my ongoing dream for a few years, to try to start this business up. And I was actually buying another business in Westport, and it didn't work out. So I'm just really blessed to have this opportunity to do business in this community, and I'm very, very excited to start.
When will you be opening?
I'm hoping to open by May 1st.
Wow.
So, right around the corner.
Yeah.
So I've been going to town in the ice cream shop, cleaning, and just trying to get everything prepared. I've already had the EN cell system checked, so everything's tagged, everything's moving along great. I have all my applications in so far with Board of Health. My menu is there. So it's really running fast, you know? I'm trying to get it as fast as I can. Secretary of State just actually incorporated the name. It's going to be called Seaside Scoops and Grill. So I've already got my logo in place, which is like, it's an ice cream cone, but it's a fun scoop of ice cream. It's actually like a water scoop, with the splashes, to try to incorporate, you know, the canal and the splash pad, and so...
Yeah.
So it's cute.
That's great. That's great.
Sounds like a great idea.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Looking forward to it.
Super location, too.
We have you on our consent agenda, which means all the paperwork is in order, and we will be approving your common victolers license, but... Okay, thank you. It will be later on in the agenda. We just wanted to give you an opportunity to introduce yourself and welcome you to the community.
Thank you. I'm sorry we're running a few minutes late. We got tied up at the town tap for dinner, and...
I told the waitress we had to be there, but...
We were waiting on you.
I got... I'm so sorry I arrived late. So welcome, and we'll see you in a minute.
Nice to meet you.
Nice meeting, everyone. Okay, now back to the regularly scheduled program.
If you will.
No, I'm not as fun as ice cream. Try to jazz it up. I know.
Okay, you can start your timer again.
So, I'm going to just jump right into, this is an example of where the timelinks, like where the timing of systems installations would look like. So with the example Title V front-loaded item, the years 1 through 5 would mean installing up to 1,400 systems, essentially, and front-loading, that's 1,400 individual systems that will need to be either converted or upgraded, depending on the type of system they have, to the general-use IA system, and then spreading out the remainder at an even 825 per five-year interval after that, in the Tier 2 watersheds. And for the watershed permit example, you can see that being able to spread it out means it's a more manageable number from year to year, and looking at a five-year clip, it's a little bit easier to think about. It's still a lot of systems to be installed. It's still over 200 per year, essentially, when you look at the pace. But for this, it might be a little bit easier to work with homeowners to be able to get into a groove of converting systems or upgrading systems.
Do we have enough staff to actually implement this on top of everything else the Board of Health has to do? You know, as far as inspections, you know?
That's later. That's later in the program.
I know, but still, you have to implement this. Well, how are you going to implement it?
You're absolutely right.
Keep going.
Things you got to figure out.
I guess an issue.
So, the only, the other item is, we have our general-use IA, which are widespread across all of the watersheds, and they're the primary technology in the 2 Tier 1 watersheds, the TMDL watersheds. Where we revisited and we were re-investigating is the Buttermilk Bay Core Sewer Area. Essentially, we were reviewing the updated flow records, so looking at wastewater flows through 2023, and looking at what the Board of Sewer Commission has allocated in terms of available flow, and we are still falling short within Bourne for being able to expand flow for the purposes of nitrogen removal. So in order to proceed, there are essentially three options that I've updated, and we carried all three of these options in each of the different timelines. So for a Title V timeline versus a watershed permit timeline, which for Buttermilk Bay, reminder, those all start in year 6. So Plan Year 6 would be 2030, and that gives you, the community, also time to start your plan, get through the first five years of it, and be able to adapt based on the conditions that you see happening in town to accommodate these three options. So when I list these out, I'm not saying we need to definitively start setting aside capital for one versus the other, but it's something to think about as you are strategizing for your first five-year check-in, essentially. So the first item is the recommended option that I'm looking at as the easiest switch would be, instead of the core sewer area, using that same geographic area that we had identified as this core sewer area, and having that be a pilot or a starter program of enhanced IA systems. So this would mean you still need to be able to use the lower effluent of total nitrogen to be able to meet the same load removal, and I'll get to that table in a moment, but essentially, you cannot meet the 25% removal goal using general-use IA's alone in Buttermilk Bay. So there would need to be a portion selected to be considered pilot technologies that would be able to treat better than our assumed 19 milligrams per liter. That was the item that we had seen as a first one off the bat, that you could put into your plan today and revisit, depending on your centralized sewer. The other two options are, you keep the core sewer area as is, and you look into getting an expanded groundwater discharge permit for increased loading to your groundwater discharge beds, and/or expanding your groundwater discharge options at the Buzzards Bay Treatment Plant, and looking to expand the footprint of that to accommodate, essentially doubling the size. So currently, we know that the Buzzards Bay Treatment Plant was designed for economic development. Essentially, resizing that facility would equal economic development plus nitrogen removal, is what that would add. And then the third option is, just go even bigger, and just go ahead and sewer all of the remaining areas in the Buttermilk Bay watershed, and add on the remaining western end of Buzzards Bay Village, which encompasses a little bit of Buttermilk Bay watershed, and then mostly is a direct discharge to Buzzards Bay. It's the feature of, when you look at some of the capital costs and the capital cost breakdown, you might see that as you add users to the sewer, there is a shared scale of cost mitigation. The more users you add, the more people that you are able to help distribute the costs more evenly. So if you're going to be doing a season's worth of construction, it's the feature of there's an economy of scale. However, with that economy of scale, it is also still, you're going to need a place to put it. So it's a decision that the community will need to think about in returning to and revisiting some of the alternatives that we'd identified for regional opportunities that we didn't pursue back in 2022, or new options that might have developed in the last year to two years, or looking forward into the next few years, as you work through the first five years of your plan. So that is the what is changed from the alternatives analysis, and I wanted to make sure I gave those options. For the actual plan summary, I'm going to go through this in a couple of different tables. I did my best to summarize and slice with the ultimate goal of trying to build this picture. So what we have is the nitrogen removal goal, that's just restating, the first column is exactly what we set out to remove. The second column is the estimated traditional nitrogen removal, so that would be the general-use IA systems. For this, I assumed that Buttermilk Bay, the little pilot, the little note next to that, is like, that I just went forward with the EIA pilot. So under the third column, which is estimated non-traditional, that includes the EIA system and the stormwater best management practices removal column. For the total estimated, column 4, which is, did we meet our goal based on removal estimates from what we have in the plan? So we are still on track to meet the total estimated removal goal, and the switch to be able to do that with Buttermilk Bay is knowing the capacity that we have at the Buzzards Bay Treatment Plant to prioritize an EIA pilot program.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, on the, let's take Buttermilk Bay, for example. Your numbers, because we, there is no TMDL, right? The estimated removal is 25% removal? Don't the Title V regulations, or when a TMDL is set, can't that result in more than a 25% reduction?
That's true. Yes.
So, we could have this plan that's not based on TMDL, and if there is a TMDL set, or if, I mean, what does the Title V say? Don't you have to remove like 75%? Isn't that what it says?
For the watershed.
So the watershed permit regulation, so it's if you choose to opt-in, the watershed permit will ask you to put forth your watershed management plan, which is, this is what we set out to remove, and this is our best available data, presented in whatever the format required by the state, of this is how we estimated the loading that we have, this is how we're estimating the load we need to remove, and you have to have 75% removal of your total controllable load by year 20 of the watershed permit. So, the watershed permit language does have some information about what you would need as the minimum requirement to meet the appropriate nitrogen modeling, to be able to submit a watershed to be eligible for a watershed permit. So at this time, the automatic eligible watersheds are McGan's, Squatique, and Finney's Harbor, because those have an existing TMDL study that the state can easily look at as an achievable methodology, to be updated with today's known information about what's changed in the community, and to use that as the, essentially, goal for the 75% removal after year 20.
Is that 564 nitrogen removal from McGan's Squatique provide a 75% removal?
The nitrogen removal goal for the McGan's Squatique is based on the TMDL, that is Bourne's share of the total TMDL, which I believe, I would have to double-check the needs assessment, but I believe it's more like a third of the total McGan's Squatique load, because of the land area in Bourne. So that is why the control, the total controllable load that Bourne has to remove is 564.
Right. Is that 75% of the 1/3?
That's 100%.
That's all of it.
That's the TMDL target.
Correct.
Okay.
100% of the TMDL.
So, but is the, does the TMDL require the 75% removal? Or does it...
So, do you want, can I try?
Yeah.
So for the TMDL watersheds, that number, that 564 for McGan's Squatique, and the Finney's Harbor 1706, that nitrogen, kilograms of nitrogen per year, that is the...
That's 100% of the removal.
That is the TMDL target, so that's all of it. So a watershed permit, if you so choose to implement a watershed permit for those TMDL watersheds, over 20 years, you have to reach 75% of that goal. But that is the goal.
Okay. And so does, I'll wait, because I was going to ask, if we do a watershed, does it show, still doing 564? Does it do 75% of the 564? I'll just wait. Thank you, that was helpful.
I get what you're saying. For the tables, tables go all the way to 100%. So that can change, depending on feedback. So, nitro, this is the nitrogen removal summary, so now we're going to move into total, well, I'll show the picture first. So this is just a reminder, the blue area that's checkered is what we had identified previously, is the core sewer area, and that would essentially become the enhanced IA pilot area for Buttermilk Bay, unless we decide to change the core area. Otherwise, the number of parcels will still be the same as the core sewer area, 330 parcels. So now we're going to get into the costs. So remember, these are conceptual costs, they are subject to change. The caveat, I will make sure that I identify now, is that these are total annual costs, which means that the total capital cost is multiplied over the life cycle of the technology, and the operation and maintenance costs are also added to that annual cost, to give the overall, what does it cost over a 20- or 15-year life cycle, depending on the alternative, the technology, to own this system? And to think of it in terms of what would the amount of money be? From the total annual cost perspective, the way that I sat while I was thinking about this, is if the town decided to go all-in on a total operation management ownership response... all in on a total operation management ownership responsible management entity, if you went full septic utility and said, wow, we're gonna really, these are gonna become public assets, they're gonna become an arm of our public utilities, what would that all-in cost be to implement this program? The next column is what the
Can you just back up a second? So the top, 'cause some of the numbers note that I saw in the spreadsheets were very different than this. So is, and I, I wanna make sure that I'm understanding and not making an assumption that is not a good assumption. So a general use IA onsite system, I kind of came up that you were estimating the cost to be five thousand dollars.
That's correct for the total annual cost. When you look, so the spreadsheets that are included in the paper, the draft paper version are the total capital costs, or looking at the capital-only allocation that the community would make year to year if you were, say, bulk buying the general use IA systems. So the larger tables that go out on a year-to-year basis are just for capital over the twenty-year timeframe. Underneath these different scenarios, whether it's the Title V or the watershed permit, and they also include the different alternatives for Buttermilk Bay. So that's the main difference as to what the capital cost breakdown is across those Excel tables.
Hold on.
Yep.
So for the total cost over twenty years, for the general use IA onsite system, is it twenty-two point five million times twenty? Or four hundred and fifty million?
So the total annual cost wouldn't account for inflation. I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but the one, if you wanted to right now, just to understand conceptually, assuming that inflation is not being incorporated.
Right.
Then yes, you could take the twenty-two point five million dollars for the general use IA and multiply that by
Twenty?
Twenty.
Twenty.
Years. So this is really important, because this, I looked at these numbers and I was like, these numbers are way too low. These are not, these are not telling the story.
Not real costs.
Right, so we're talking, we're talking twenty-two point five million dollars.
A year.
A year.
Every year for the next twenty years.
Yes, and the, the next two lines that Buttermilk Bay, it's not, you're not doing you're not doing all three of those, you're doing one of them, right?
Correct, one of those three, and it's over fifteen years, because those wouldn't be implemented until year six. So it would be if you went with the all-in searing all of Buttermilk Bay, just under ten point five million, starting in twenty thirty, up until twenty forty-fourish.
So you can multiply that times fifteen.
Correct.
One of them.
And then the other item would be core sewer area alternative one, that would be the similar timeframe. So it would be six point one million, starting in year twenty thirty. Again, we're pretending inflation isn't being added into this, but I, believe me, it will. Six point one million times fifteen, six million dollars per year, starting in twenty thirty over the next fifteen years, or pilot EIA onsite system of three point five million dollars per year, starting in year six also.
The Buttermilk Bay sewer alternative two, is that the regional alternative?
Yes, that would essentially
Alternative one is like adding on to the current
Expanding the current.
So when you look at this twenty-two, these numbers look, the way as an annual cost, they, they don't look that impactful, but if they're multiplied by twenty or fifteen, these are big numbers.
Three hundred million plus.
So, so if I might, I think that we probably need to add some context to this if we're gonna post the presentation to make sure that we cover the, that detail on it.
Right, it's almost like the total cost versus that total annual cost.
Total annual cost.
I think you need to put that
To add that in.
I think you need to add that column.
Yes, yeah.
And, and to make note that, well, I don't know if we need to make note of it's, it's one of three and not all three.
Yeah.
Three, option.
Option one, option two, option three.
Yeah.
I can format those a lot nicer, too. Yep, and we'll add the column here. So then kind of going through the, the remaining columns for this table, the estimated nitrogen removal is for that technology category. So looking at over the entire length of the plan, just looking at that technology, how much that technology is slated to remove in our current plan, and then looking at the total annual cost, and essentially dividing that by what is removed on a kilogram per year basis to come up with what that range is. And again, it's when you're talking about such large numbers, and when we're going to be talking to stakeholders and getting community feedback about this plan, it is hard to try to make those figures relatable. So I'd expanded the total individual cost to kind of include an estimate of what that might look like, starting year one through the end of the plan, depending on which watershed you live in, and then looking at the approximate cost per kilogram of nitrogen removed to understand how you might wanna invest in one of the Buttermilk Bay alternatives over another, for example, if that is something that you're looking to optimize.
Can I ask a question?
You certainly may.
The, Kate, I'm sorry, I think you said it, but I, I missed it. The individual total annual cost, that includes like the capital betterment plus the annual O and M?
Correct.
Okay.
So for the general use IA system, that would be the purchase and installation of the technology as we estimated the capital, plus the twenty-year useful life of that homeownership for the general use IA system. For the EIA system, those did have a fifteen-year, a slightly lower life cycle, because they do have a couple more components that may need to be changed. So the pilot EIA system includes a capital cost for over a fifteen-year timeline, plus the annual cost of operation and maintenance. For the sewer alternatives, that includes the capital planning, design, and construction costs of the associated treatment upgrades and disposal, as well as the capital cost for the installation of that alternative's low-pressure sewer design area. And it's distributed across the total number of users that would be added to the Borne Sewer Utility District essentially, this Borne Sewer District. So the price, the total individual annual cost is actually built on all sewer users. So if I need to add, I will add a footnote to that, too, to show that it would be distributed across all new users of the system. And I can break that out differently if we just wanna show what a new user would be, or if you'd look to distribute that. And that kind of gets to where our next steps go, which is when we land on a capital item that we like, how we can sort of model what it would look like.
Does the sewer alternatives include O and M?
They do. We looked at the existing operation and maintenance budget for the amount of sewer total length and total flow that Borne already is responsible for, and then we did the size-up assumption for what are you currently paying on a cost per gallon? And what would future costs look like over inflation and over the life cycle of the plan? So we used existing to help model what future would be for expanding within your existing DPW.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah, you certainly can. I think it's really hard to have capital and operating maintenance combined in one number. It's making me, it's
I don't understand. And I'm, I'm trying not to sound critical, but the conversation a couple slides ago about sewer service alternative to spreading the costs out over more users should be, should be a lower user cost. Why is this such a higher user cost?
As of right now, the regional unknown of whether Borne would choose to keep their treatment in-house, or if they would need to build an entirely new system, is highly variable at this time. So ultimately, what I wanted to present was I wanted to figure out, how can we present to you the capital cost option in today's dollars for what searing that entire neighborhood would look like? If you are just looking at the capital costs, so separating out the O and M, and separating out the cost for the treatment facility, if you're just looking at the collection system costs, the mobilization of the full sewer alternative capital-wise is within less than five million of this core sewer area for capital costs. So when you're looking at doing sewer area one, just the core sewer alternative, I wanted to make sure you were also armed with seeing what the capital information would be for the value of nitrogen removal from that entire neighborhood. Because I wouldn't want you to try to write off just one core sewer area, and or you may need it in the future, you may need to see what kind of a removal that can get you in the future.
So I strongly feel that the capital costs, you can give us annual costs, but the capital costs have to be separated out. Because we have to be able to, when we do our financial analysis, we have to be able to say that just this, the, the capital cost of this is a hundred million dollars, and we're gonna get twenty-five million dollars of that from the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund. So we can't, that, we need to be able to, to understand what the ongoing operational costs are gonna be, and what the capital costs would be, and not to mesh them into one number, because it's, it, it means that you can't really understand what you're doing. And, and I also have to say is, at four hundred and fifty million dollars for general use IA systems, what would it cost if we sewered the same areas? Like, what's the cost per mile for laying sewer pipe and building a plant? Is it four hundred and fifty million dollars, or is it two hundred million dollars? I, I, I mean, it's fine to have an alter, it's fine to say we're gonna use this alternative, we're gonna use IA systems, but to do that in a vacuum of having absolutely no financial understanding means that you're, you're, you're making a decision like with, with no comparison. So originally, when we started this whole exercise, we were told that no matter what we did in the CWMP, no matter what we chose for alternatives, searing was gonna be an alternative. And somehow, in the process here, Mast EP has said, oh, well, you don't have to sewer, but that's not what we were told in the beginning. We were told that we would be comparing alternatives to sewer. And now I'm just finding the numbers kind of staggering. So I, I, I
We seem to have moved away from the searing part of it.
Yeah, but the searing part of it is, you, you need to understand what that is to be, to make a good, I mean
It's your comparison.
It, it is your comparison, so. And I, I don't know, I mean, we, the sewer comparison is like how many miles a pipe, and what does a plant cost for however many gallons a day of production, and so, yeah.
So what I'm hearing is that revisiting a high-level cost for sewer comparatively for the tier one and tier two, the tier one watersheds is something that you'd like to have as part of your decision-making tools?
I know, not sure for the tier one.
For the general use IA.
Well, so, so let's talk tier, let's talk, let's talk tier one. So you have McGann's critique, tier one.
Right.
Which is highly spread out, not that many, not that many houses. You know, what's, what's the cost of the McGann's critique to, to provide that? And if we did a watershed permit and said, we're meeting our TMDL right now, do we have to do anything? No, we don't. If we're, right now, we could enter into a watershed permit from McGann's critique, and say, we're meeting our TMDL, and we're gonna monitor it for ten years and see if it's, if we're still meeting it. I mean, so that, that's kind of
But I, but it's very different for Finney's Harbor.
Yes, and Finney's Harbor is much more concentrated, and it's a much more concentrated area, and it makes more sense for searing than, than, than this,
Than anything else.
Than a really expensive general use system estimated at five thousand dollars per system, which is
Over twenty years.
Well, so it's five thousand times twenty, right? Is that what you're saying?
It's almost six thousand.
Yeah, let's say six thousand.
It's really almost six thousand.
So six thousand over twenty years, but that's capital and operating. So what, what's the capital cost of the individual system?
Forty-two, so let's just, for rounding purposes, say forty-three thousand all in.
And then you take the forty-three thousand and divide that by twenty.
Correct.
Okay. So, so I think for me, as a finance person, like, I'd like to have the numbers that I can add up, not have numbers that are clumped together that I have to try to break down. So I think that although understanding the cost over twenty years is a valid exercise, I think it complicates what's the capital cost, and then what's the operating cost, and
You'd almost rather have the whole cost in front of you, for both of them.
I'd like to have the capital cost, yeah, and then say, okay, and this is what it costs to operate. Anybody else have questions?
I, I will say, I agree, we, we seem to have kind of moved away from the sewer part of it, for whatever reason. I, I know there was a large dislike from the community originally, and maybe that's where we got away from it.
Well, we know that we don't want an outfall in the canal. That doesn't necessarily mean that you're not gonna have sewer at all, so.
I mean, an outfall of clean water is still better than a nitrogen-rich groundwater.
Based on what they're doing for outfall discharge and shellfishing, and how they're, the prohibitions that they're making, it's getting much more difficult to have an outfall and still have shellfishing. All right, well, anyway, I, I think you need a total cost, and I need a, you know, a sort of a breakdown. This, it's, it's gonna cost so much in capital, and then the annual cost is, that's, it's over twenty years, it's gonna be fifty-eight hundred dollars per user, which divided by twenty isn't that bad, so, okay.
So, if I might, so the spreadsheets that we did to put this all together has all that information. So what we will do is we'll take out and show a table of the capital costs
Yep.
for each of them, and then we can show the O and M for each of them. So it's not that that information isn't available.
Sure it's there, 'cause that's how I knew there was a disconnect.
You've seen the sheets, right, yes.
I looked at the sheets, and I was like, wait a minute, this was like fifteen million dollars every year, so like, how did it turn out to twenty-two million dollars?
In terms of, in terms of the sewer, just to remind everybody how we got, got to here is, there was the sewer advisory committee, we did have conversations, there were alternatives chosen, and based on the alternatives chosen, these are the recommended plan that came up. We were talking about looking at, originally, the state required a backup plan for what they call traditional systems, which at the time was sewers. However, now it's considered, general use IA's are considered traditional now by the state. So it's not required to have a backup.
Right.
That's full sewer, so I just wanted to be clear on that. So to your questions and points, is there a particular watershed that we're looking to have some high-level sewer numbers for comparative situation, so we're not, you know, is it tier ones?
Well, we've already, you've already got Buttermilk Bay, you've already got Buttermilk Bay, right?
Yes.
I would say Finney's Harbor.
Finney's is the only one I would think of, really.
Finney's Harbor, I mean, Pecasset is pretty, I mean
Yeah.
It's almost like there might be areas that make sense to be sewered, or and I understand that, that And I understand that that originally, when the wastewater advisory committee looked at alternatives, they were alternatives. To a sewer system. I mean, that that was what we were, we were told you kind of have to have that. Now, just because in the process, it's become that you don't have to show it. I I feel, I've already been asked by people, like, why aren't we sewer-ing? And especially if. In the future, areas that are, don't have a TMDL. Could get a TMDL and then the requirement.
Be a lot worse.
Exactly, that the requirement for what we're doing could be a lot worse. So I I feel like we're, I. There's something missing here and I'm I'm I'm, I, maybe I just need to spend a little bit more time on the spreadsheets. They're hard to.
They are, they're a lot.
There's a lot of data there. There's no question about it. And that's why we're trying to assimilate information. So it's really helpful for you to s- to.
Yeah.
Let us know, this is too far on the other end of the spectrum, right? So so what spectrum are we are we trying to get to? And I think that that's something that we need to think about.
Yeah. So, uh, does, how, do, what do people feel about the sewer question? I mean, do we, I mean, you could take areas, let's, let's talk about some areas that we know, like, let's say Great Gables. Like, Great Gables isn't even in, it's not even in any of this list.
No, because it's a direct discharge.
Right.
Well, because it's in, it's in, it's in, it's a discharge to Buttermilk Bay. Is it considered Buttermilk Bay? No, no, I mean, I mean Buzzards Bay.
No, it's the Buzzards Bay.
It's Buzzards Bay. It's in the Buzzards.
South or whatever.
Discharges to Buzzards Bay, which is not consid- considered impaired. So like, like the western end of Scraggy Neck is listed discharging to Buttermilk, Buttermilk, Buzzards Bay. So it's not. It's not even in, it's not even in this list.
Right.
So we have this whole section of Great Gables. That is is not even in this four hundred and fifty million dollars.
But it's not a priority for, it's not a priority for managing the load.
Right.
That's true.
Right. It it's not an impaired watershed.
Paired watershed.
I'm gonna just skip to the next slide cuz it just summarizes by watershed.
Okay.
To kind of, this might, and again, I know it's total annual cost, so again, I sliced it and it's using the wrong knife. I get that. But for, I I get where you're looking in terms of holistically, this is a a planned investment. The concern of equity is something that we're gonna be looking at. What is the price? Per kilogram of nitrogen removed difference across the watersheds. That was kind of what I was trying to achieve with this slide. And looking at, yeah, where are there going to be concerns about? The price difference and looking to figure out structures to help even. The kilogram removal per nitrogen per year investment. So looking across the watersheds, and again, I understand that we need to drill down the total annual cost. Into more representative capital O and M totals to help you as decision-makers. I wanted to also just kind of look, the goal here is to show that they're they're in a similar ballpark, even though we have. The EIA pilot, the primary mechanism for the other remaining watersheds at this point. Is the widespread use of the conventional general use IA system. So if there is a sewer interest, it may end up increasing the cost per kilogram removed. But you might be able to get there over a faster timeline. So. The one takeaway I wanted to also show is when you're looking at the removal for. The watersheds and the way that I had set up the larger capital cost spreadsheets. Is I was looking at the systems installed, like the number of general use IA systems to be installed. Would it be more helpful if it was an annual removal and the systems installed to give you an idea of? For the capital cost you are paying, what you are removing each year on the plan?
No.
No.
I'm sorry, I don't think that's gonna be helpful.
Make help with the decision.
Fair.
Cost for.
I mean, I think this is, it, this is, shows approximate cost per kilogram of nitrogen. Removed um, for these alternatives.
I don't think we can use that as a comparison with sewer because they can, sewer treatment plants can remove so much more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, it's just not comparable.
Yeah.
It's a little bit comparable to the But- Buttermilk Bay EIA pilot. Cuz those are closer to the numbers of a, of a traditional sewer. But if that's, that um, that Buzzard, Buttermilk Bay sewer alternative to a regional sewer. Thirty-four ninety is pretty much the same as the thirty-five eighty for the EIA. So.
What's the number for the EIA? Is it ten?
Thousand is the annual cost per.
No, no, for the ni- nitrogen, it's a ten milligrams per liter. For the EIA, it's nineteen for the general use.
I think I had estimated fifteen.
Oh.
Per liter.
That's it? I mean, that much?
Yeah.
And what are you estimating for sewer? Four?
Ten milligrams per liter.
Oh, ten?
Yeah, it is ten. Which can get lower if you have advanced.
Tertiary.
Treatment, yeah.
Some of the assumptions, we have to make sure we understand the assumptions too. Okay.
This is just a recap of the next steps. It's sitting with this. The goal was to kind of looking ahead for timeframe, timeline. We're working backwards from Fall Town Meeting. And looking at what we would need to get accomplished this year in order to get to Town Meeting with a recommended plan. So this is in fact a draft recommended plan. It is the first draft. So this feedback will be incorporated and you will get revised versions with these cost breakdowns. And what I'm hearing is more clearer assumptions outlined for the cost basis. Then the goal would be to draft the final draft recommended plan. Ultimately, it will stay a draft recommended plan throughout the MEPA filing process because there will be a public comment period. MEPA, Cape Cod Commission, and Mass DEP will weigh in on the draft recommended plan. And then after the comment period, all public comments received can be reincorporated later this summer. Right before Fall Town Meeting. If there are significant comments, then. The goal would be to work through those comments and to have the recommended plan ready for twenty-twenty-five Spring Town Meeting. Worst case. But at the moment, we are still working towards Fall twenty-twenty-four Town Meeting. So what that looks like is us incorporating the feedback around the cost assumptions. But before I make any sudden movements on calculating items. If you do want to take some time to review, think about this from the, what else you think is missing from this puzzle equation. To help you as decision-makers to make recommendations for the community. Then that feedback is what I will need to help get you that data so that you can then incorporate that into your decision-making as well.
Can I, so, the things that were missing. I'm a little hesitant to even say this, but. Like, can we talk realistically about? DEP just not issuing discharge permits at all?
That actually, I, you bring up a great point, Marlene. And actually, this was one of the action items.
P-FAS, like.
When we had last spoken about this draft plan and when we were thinking we would want to get Mass DEP feedback. The goal was to include them as part of the public notification process when we're going through MEPA. An item that might be helpful at this juncture is to pull together those specific points with. This draft to provide as an unofficial draft copy for feedback from Mass DEP. And we can ask those specific questions to them so that we have an opportunity to incorporate any of their feedback. Before we put this forth for public comment. That's one option that you can. We have not sent this as a, you know, I know it's posted on the website, but we haven't sent this as a courtesy copy yet to Mass DEP. We've done that with Phase One and Phase Two deliverables, but we have not given this to them yet. We have an opportunity to use that as a check-in with them, if you'd like.
Questions?
So, I have a question.
Discharge question. So I would have to give that back to them to answer, but it's a very real.
I mean, we have, we see, every town.
Possibility?
Every town on the Cape has has sewer projects that are just hung up in regulatory limbo.
Because they're not doing discharge.
Because they're just not doing discharge permits.
Um, this is, um, we have for Finney's Harbor, a total estimated removal. Of twenty-three forty-two to twenty-five twenty-three. And that's based on nineteen kilograms removal, which is the general IA. If you were to sewer at ten, you could sewer half of the area, right? To get the same.
Small sewers are the most, I mean.
They're most expensive, but.
And you gotta have a place to put them.
And you have to talk about the seasonality. Like, you can't, you can't run a municipal sewer plant with this. With a seasonal population.
Especially when it's like sixty-five percent seasonable or more.
But we're not sixty-five percent.
Well, no, in certain areas.
These neighborhoods.
Some of these neighborhoods are.
Like, if you're gonna look at it in the neighborhood level, you have to talk about the seasonality.
Finney's Harbor, I mean, how many people truly live there year-round?
Around Monument Beach. There's a lot of year-round population in that concentrated area. I don't know. If there's an area, I don't wanna, I don't wanna spend too much time looking at it. But if they, if they're, I I want to be able to answer the question. You know, it, you know.
Cheaper to sewer or do I?
For a a more, better result. I mean, that's kind of the problem. I mean, part of the problem is that we're, we're doing, basing this on general use IA systems instead of. Enhanced IA systems, which we should, if we're gonna be sewer-ing, we should asking people to put in enhanced IA systems, not use general use ones. Cuz they generally get better. Then the problem is that they're provisional and they're not approved as general use, so.
They're not traditional.
Yeah. All right. So. Let's, let's see if we can break out some of the numbers, get them to more, so we kind of. And and it's important to me because I've been talking for a long time about why we need a wastewater investment infrastructure fund. Because the costs of this are gonna be really expensive. And people are like, well, what are you talking about? Like, what do we need, what do, what do we need this for? Like, we, you know, we have.
That's what, those numbers would be helpful. So to be able to say to somebody, okay, your cost. Twenty years or not, is this and these operating costs, capital costs. Somebody's, that's gonna be a question. They're gonna wanna know, how much am I paying? No, not over twenty years. I wanna know the actual cost. That's, that's the mindset.
And and it's gonna be important for us to be able to explain. If we do this as a watershed permit, this is the co- these are the costs that you will have to pay. These are the costs that will be. Potentially paid for by some other pieces of money. And then if we do the Title V, this is your cost within the next five years and it's yours.
And, right.
Yeah.
Well, I think we know that already.
Well, to be able to give somebody those numbers, though, and that's what we're talking about, like, to be able to say. This is your cost in this particular setting and then in this setting, this is your cost.
Which gets you the watershed permit and, and is it possible for us, if we do do a ma- a watershed permit? From McGannson to sk- critique to say, and is it possible in our comprehensive wastewater management plan? To say, we're meeting the TMDL?
No.
No, based on conversations when we've asked Mass DEP, that the current readings at the Sentinel Stations. Don't apply because of when, the way they had worded it was, they're looking at load reduction. So having the water quality indicator. Meeting the limit is wonderful, but they're still concerned about how that might fluctuate. If the load of wastewater into the watershed is not actionably reduced, if you're not taking action to reduce that load. So we did bring that up explicitly because of that conversation around, it's meeting it, can't we get credit for it? And Mass DEP said.
No, we're gonna move the target on you.
Correct.
So if there's no action taken, it doesn't count.
We're just gonna monitor it. I mean, if it starts, the load starts going back.
Yeah, but we're not reducing, we're not actively reducing any of it.
So they're gonna keep moving the target down.
They're gonna force you to do something, period.
They're gonna, right, they're forcing you to reduce whether.
So if your total maximum daily load is five hundred, they're gonna make it four hundred, so you're not meeting it anymore?
You have to keep actively reducing even below the target.
Okay.
You're required to do some sort of action.
And monitoring is not considered.
No.
An action.
Well, removing, removing, we, I mean, the, what's happened is there has been significant removal. That's, that's the issue, that, that, that.
There's been change.
There's been change. So uses that were of the property are no longer uses of the property. I mean, and it's not that much. I mean, it's kind of confusing, but we've set aside property as conservation land that's not, no longer eligible for development. So that is, that is, that's the thing, first thing we did. Okay, enough, I won't beat the dead hearse here. All right, so what's the next step here? We're gonna come back with some different, like, more. Medium things on the numbers.
Some of it out more.
Yes, I'm going to revise the attachment tables to have, instead of just capital costs, which is what you have. I'm going to add to those tables the O and M costs for the number of systems being installed. As well as what, for the sewer options, those increased operational maintenance costs would be out over the time for the plan. So that you can look at the line item of capital, the line item of operation maintenance, and then look at what. The lifetime rate would be, you can then add up the capital costs separately from your O and M costs, if you can look at it in that way.
So the O and M costs, you need to have, if you're looking at the costs of the existing sewer. Use budget, right? The, this new sewer thing that would be added would add these costs. So the total cost would be this. The existing users would be twelve hundred. The new users would be whatever it is. So certain of those costs are gonna be borne over the whole thing, but. It's going to be clear to me that the existing sewer users. Who have had a couple of tough years of rates because of the way the su- added, the sewer plant came on. We're getting the users now to sort of, uh, do the rates. The, the, the concept of adding. Forty million dollars of capital costs and then increasing the, even if it's further, you know, they're not gonna be really excited about paying for this. Part of the sewer system. So we have to figure that out.
Well, the new users would be a betterment.
Right. So that would be a capital. And so that, what's that betterment? What's that? So that's why the capital really has to be broken out, because that, that capital cost is gonna be betterment. And it's only gonna be the operating costs that's gonna be spread out over.
There'll be a new marginal operating cost.
Okay.
Yeah, but the, the, um, expansion has, well, I don't, I mean, I don't know. Unless you don't want, unless the town doesn't wanna do a betterment and have it be like, spread out across everybody. But, um, and subsidized, but otherwise, the, the new users coming onto the system. Would pay their proportional share of a betterment.
Right. And and throughout this whole thing, because it's eventually gonna be everybody. It's not just the sewer users. There's the sewer users and the septic users, and they're all gonna have capital costs. And so how we end up apportioning that. With the town. And so, how we end up apportioning that with the town and with the people is gonna be another conversation.
Okay. So, I can get you revised Appendix A, D and E, I think they are, so I'm gonna be doing this for the spread out Tier One, which is the watershed permit option, and then the front-loaded Title V, which is just getting Tier One all done in five years. Separating out those costs, I will get you that as soon as possible first, and then I will wait for your feedback looking at the rest of the narrative holistically with the revised tables. And what would be a reasonable time for review expectation? I know you guys have Springtown meeting.
So, you should have those numbers for us tomorrow, right?
I'm gonna need a bigger coffee.
Gonna need fourteen minutes instead of thirty.
So, so, we have, we have meetings next week, the sixteenth, the thirtieth, and May fourteenth. So, wh- do you want us to get a draft and have a meeting and look at it?
You guys should, yeah, sit down and talk.
Right, and then, then we can get comments to as a board. So, the thirtieth, do you, I mean, we're not gonna have it next week, it's only gonna be next week.
You have, have the delegation on the thirtieth.
Yeah. I would say, get us your stuff, and then, it's, we're, we're, it's gonna, we'll, we'll figure out once we have it, when we can schedule, and then, well, Marlene will let you know when we, we'll be ready to comment.
That's all I had today, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know, we asked you so many questions, but, you know, we're engaged, that's what you say, we're an engaged group.
We ruined your thirteen minutes.
Next item, update recommendations from Road Safety Traffic Committee. Welcome, Mr. Lyden.
It's a tough one to follow. Screen share from here.
Yeah, you should be able to. Way to be self-sufficient.
Careful, we're gonna start expecting that more.
If it works, we will.
Look at this guy.
Okay, so, um, Tim Lyden, Engineering Department, representing the roadway traffic safety committee tonight. Um, it is a committee that's been working over the past year or two to resolve traffic problems that have been posed maybe this board, or any, or Town Administration's office, my office, DPW, Police, Fire. Realizing that we had a gap to answer those, those problems and come up with solutions, I think this has been a really productive committee, in my eyes, in my experience. So, today, we're bringing you our very first update. This is a result of, um, like I said, a, a few months of work, but I would like to tell you that these are the most pressing issues to bring to you today. I'd say that these matters are urgent, for lack of a better term. They're things that we need to move on soon, in the next few months, to kind of see the, the, the fruits of the discussion, uh, based on our recommendations. So, I'm just gonna dive into it, I'm gonna run through this memo. I don't give props to Matt Sawicki and Chief ESIP for doing some really great graphics and a really good memo. It's really a, a very comprehensive, um, report, based on a lot of discussions that have happened over the past year, so. We have four items we wanted to bring for recommendations. First one being a townwide traffic study of the speed limit signage in town. A lot of the comments we got from the public were based on speeding in town. And it's really hard to come up with solutions with, you know, one-on-one discussions with the resident, because you really need to understand issues in their totality with, when it comes to road systems. Over the past year or so, the DPW, police, myself, we've really, uh, tried to ascertain any regulations, whether they're statutory or regulatory, for speed limit signage. Um, I think a really important thing for us to know is to know what we're supposed to have in the field, and then what is actually there, understanding what that is, and finding what our gaps are. Do we lack signage? Are we not informing people of speed limits? And plus, things on paper are one thing, enforcement is a whole nother issue. So, what we're trying to do with that is to try to identify any gaps we might have, and then come back to this board. And that might include hiring, um, a consultant to do some of that work, once we really know, and, and locate our assets on an asset management tool, like a map or some sort. Next issue.
Um, before you, before, just on, um, so, you're, you're, you're making a recommendation that, um, there, there be some sort of traffic study. Don't, don't some of the new signs that you've gotten that say how fast you're going, don't they track some of this information? So, we're, we're able, I mean, I know that we've deployed more of these speed sign things, and, you know, they tend to be a pretty good deterrent, because people say, oh, I didn't know I was going forty.
Yeah, they've been great, I mean, that, those are new tools that we have, um, and those could help us in future studies, with the eighty-fifth percentile type of studies that we would do. So, those have, those have been useful in that, that amount of time.
Can I just?
Yep, go ahead.
Touch on that one? So, so that's not just, it's not just tracking the speed limit of vehicles and things like that, it's, it's, um, when you leave an intersection, how far from the intersection should a speed limit sign be posted, so that you know what the speed limit on that particular road is? Different things like that, like distances from certain locations, how often should they be posted? How, you know, every three miles, every ten mile, you know, those types of standards, as well as, you know, size, um, the lettering. Those are really kind of more where we're headed for some of this stuff. It's not necessarily just monitoring the speeds of vehicles and things like that, it's making sure that we have signs posted the right distance before playgrounds, and things of that nature.
In a business district, even?
Yes.
You know, there's, there's new laws that have, that have come out to try to, you know, when you do a traffic study, you take the eighty-fifth percentile for the speed, you monitor what the actual speeds are. So, um, they've come up with a couple really unique laws, and those are things that we're gonna start reviewing over the next, you know.
So, this is something that the Road Traffic Safety Committee is going to be undertaking? You're, is this really informing us that you're gonna be doing this work?
Yes.
Okay.
Once I show you Chief ESIP's memo, I'm gonna show you how we've become asset managers, um, through and through, so. The next topic is parking issues at Sagamore Beach, as well as electric AV. This came from a discussion, and feel free to jump in, Liz. So, the Town Administration had worked with the DPW, um, and the Police Department last fall as a follow-up to tickets that were written over the summer from parking during the beach-going times. I think out of that discussion, there was some really interesting, um, um, insight to what signage said and how it was interpreted by the public. So, what we have following, um, here in the memo, is an appendix showing a lot of the different signage that we have, and what we would like to change about some of these things. So, I'll show you, th- these are the, the signs that we'd like to add. There's actually a, a table showing their locations, what we're doing, description, and what the sign type would be. I'm gonna come down to the map, shows how these are placed. This is the Sagamore Beach master map, I'll go into where Chief ESIP went into detail. The green lines being where we would allow beach parking, the red li- red lines, and this has a lot to do with signage that already exists. We're trying to come up with a uniform approach, something coherent that people can understand when they go from area to area, what's allowed and what is not allowed. Cause some of the, um, word, wording on these signs can be confusing, can also be misinterpreted. Um, a lot of the changes we're making is to be more clear, um, and to show arrows from here to there, um, to close gaps that might be misconceptions, and obviously taking in, um, resident testimony. Chief ESIP really did a thorough job on where these signs should be placed. Just gonna kind of buzz through this a little bit, because it's pretty comprehensive.
I like this idea of color coding, like, the green means there's parking, there may be limits, but the red means there's no parking, and so, you kind of get that drift, yeah.
Again, I wanna highlight the, um, asset management tool. Um, the police are out there, taking notes of these signs and geolocating them on this software. So, they're basically pulling double duty while they're out there. Which is inspiring. So, different areas that we have throughout town, an electric AV with trailer parking was an issue, so they, they, they're doing their best to address that. This is the one I could really, I really reviewed, could really understand, and I thought those changes were very much needed, and did a good job.
Just to, just to add on, it's not to change any parking restrictions or locations. It's clarifying on-site for people when they pull up to a space. They can make an educated decision whether or not to invest prior to the sign or after a sign is posted. But right now, the way that it is written, it's very ambiguous when somebody who is not familiar with the area, they don't know if it's before the sign or after the sign, that it's, the rules apply, and they're not gonna go look on the traffic rules and regulations on the town website when they have a car full of kids that they're about to, like, park and invest in. So, this is, um, to assist with helping make educated decisions on-site.
And that, no parking between signs, I never know which signs.
So, the arrows, all of that is, and the way that the sign is actually gonna be positioned for people, so it's very, it's much more user-friendly.
So, I'll give that working group a lot of credit. A lot of the signage in town that I've, I've reviewed over my ten years is kind of been a reaction to other issues or complaints that have been put up over time. This is really helpful for us, and this is kind of like a new thing for us to really think of something comprehensively and go with a, a village-wide approach. This next slide is actually the cost breakdown of what we're doing. I'd like to thank Matt Sawicki for putting that together, really showing some good, you know, cost management. Questions on Sagamore Beach and electric AV?
That looks good.
Wanna jump into Scraggy Neck, the railroad bridge, um, the overpass at Post Office Square. So, this was a complaint that came to us by residents that lived adjacent to this bridge. There's been a lot of near misses and hits that were unreported. It had come to, to my attention over the past couple of years.
By trains?
Oh, by trucks.
Oh, what?
The sign is nine foot six inches, and they.
Try to go through it.
Like, I haven't heard anybody get hit by a train over there.
So, yeah, so very importantly, it's a very low clearance, it's a green bridge, the abutments are very narrow. I mean, this was basically an area where we dug out earth, you know, a hundred and fifty years ago, added some abutments and to, to, to get that crossing over. Modern traffic and, you know, appliance deliveries and septic installs, all the people that are coming into these areas need to know that Depot Road and McGansett Street, and McGansett Ro- uh, Road all exist as alternative routes. DPW Director, Roadway Traffic Safety Committee, came up with a really good approach to put signage outside of that direct system, to give warning, um, as, um, large trucks approach this area. And to me, I think that's the best thing we can do, is notify them, so they have alternative ways of coming around these areas. We do already have truck route signs, um, and, but I think this actually meshes in well with those, those directives.
But, you know, there is no truck route sign, and I'm just, cause I tell people, there is around McGansett, like, so you can come down to McGansett back right that way. But, I mean, I tell appliance delivery people, you can't come down Scraggy Neck Road, you have to go around, and you have to come around through, like, Parker's Boatyard, that's the other way to come. And there's no reference in this of coming around that way. So, if you're, if you're coming down Scraggy Neck Road, and you're coming, you're approaching Depot Roads on the right, and it's nine-six, well, where do I go? Where you go from there is you take a right onto Depot, and then take a left on a county, and then you go downshore, and then come around, that's the way to go.
Right.
But that, and that's something that should be marked, because, as like a truck route? Because that's, that's, you know, we, we, there's, there's, going down there, there's nothing to tell you what you're supposed to do, and that's really the way to go around.
So, I will say there were other topics at the Roadway Traffic Safety Committee that we did not bring today. That is one of them. So, we'll, we'll be looking to discuss that in the future.
That's good.
So, as you can see, um, several new signage will go up to give warning to this, uh, this low-lying bridge. I mean, nine-six is really low. Signage on that bridge is not gonna make it, um, we're gonna put the signage that we, I just showed you in those different areas. Um, we're gonna put another sign across the street to match the sign that's already there, and above the, uh, speed limit fifteen miles per hour sign. We're gonna monitor this, see how the, this goes for the first, you know, year or so, and if we need to put signage on the bridge. We're actually also speaking with Mass DOT engineers, as well as Mass Coastal, on how we can all work together to make sure we're doing our best to notify trucks approaching this low clearance.
Yeah. Great, that's good.
Final one is parking on Main Street by Mezzaluna. Um, we're having tough visibility coming out of those parking lots. Um, we have parking in an area that normally might not be designed for that area. You should have some bump outs, maybe even some street drainage. But we can come back to that, but the recommendation here is to hash out two existing spaces, and then make one spaces, one space dedicated to motorcycle parking.
I think that's really important, cause it is, that's a really tough thing to come out of that parking lot and try to take a left.
You can't see.
I actually usually take a right and then turn around someplace else.
You know, and the rest, the surrounding areas on Main Street are underutilized for parking, so you might just have to walk a little bit long, like, a little bit further. And that's it for our update at this point.
And that was actually a request by the business owner.
There we go.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a good request.
So, and another benefit for having this committee is to field those types of questions and look at it comprehensively, and pull together recommendations, uh, as a collective unit.
So, do we need to take any action on these recommendations? I mean, I, I think in, before we did the Grasslands Lane thing, we actually did take a vote to say, so are they ready for that yet, or no?
So, um, Grasslands Lane, you are actually installing new signs?
Okay.
You were, those signs were not already on Chief ESIP's spreadsheet?
Okay.
I think, um, I think at this point, for all of these things, if there's anything you don't want us to keep moving forward with, please let us know, and we'll halt. Otherwise, we'll just move, we'll, this is cleanup work in, in many respects.
Yeah, we're looking to move on this signage as soon as possible.
Yeah, so, I, I would suggest that we take a vote in the board to support the recommendations.
Absolutely, because there's, there are a few signs that will be added, but.
And I'd like to sort of memorialize it, that we actually were in concurrence, and thank the, that board for their work, and, um, we support it, so, is that?
Motion, second?
Motion by Peter, second by Jared, to support the recommendations of the Road Traffic Safety Committee. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. York.
Mr. York. Are you there, John?
Yes, sorry, it took me a minute to unmute.
That's okay.
I thank this, the, the, the WESAP Traffic Safety Committee. I know Marlene feels like we have too many committees, but this is one that really pulls their weight, I think.
I didn't say that.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, anyway, this is a big committee, I'll just leave it at that. I just had a couple comments on some details. On this speed limit thing, um, Tim was talking about the eighty-five percent. There's a new initiative out from Mass DOT that's part of their, um, Vision Zero, to try to eliminate all roadway problems. And, um, it gives this town's new leeway to set lower speed limits to just improve safety beyond what the old standards for speed limits were. I think there's a process the town has to go through, a few hoops you have to jump through with Mass DOT to get your lower speed limits approved, but it's something we should be thinking about. We should be thinking about it now, there's a lot of fast traffic on the, on the roads, and lowering speed limits in some places might be good. But, um, when we think about the new bridges are in, and people are going sixty-five miles an hour on the top of the bridge, and it, and then turning onto our little roads, and with their bodies keyed to going much faster, I think that we're gonna, and there's gonna be more cars coming over the bridge, we're gonna need to look at traffic coming by speed limit and anything else we can do within the town. So, that's a long-range thing, but I think that's something we should be looking at. So, another comment, thank you very much for looking at whether parking signs are understandable or not. One thing that I don't know if it's on your radar screen, but when you have two signs that say no parking between signs, that only works if a person can see both signs at once. So, there's some in Katamit where, um, there's so many Katamit where, uh, it says no parking between signs, but if you're standing on a sign, you can't see the other sign. So, just put that on your radar screen, there too. So, uh, those are just a couple of things, but I think this is a great, uh, step forward. And one more thing on the truck route around the Scraggy Neck, uh, overpass. I don't know if it's possible, once you establish a truck route, to give a different speed limit for trucks than for cars. I don't know if it's possible, once you establish a truck route, to give a different speed limit for trucks than for cars. But, um, it would be useful. The one-eighty squeety Harbor Road and all the truck trucks coming from one-fifty-one or from Falmouth for any construction work. They go at thirty miles an hour and that's totally unsafe, so it's something that you might wanna consider. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Um, I do have a comment for the signage on the bridge, which you said you're not gonna do initially, but you're gonna think about doing later. When you do, if you do consider doing it, be mindful of the painting on the bridge and the Kalamet Village thing and talking to the civic association about like, you know, so just character of the village thing.
Sure.
Thank you.
That was discussed at the meeting.
Yeah, good. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, the email for the roadway traffic safety committee is rtscommittee@townofborn.com if anybody has a, a unique issue that they think needs to be brought to our attention. And that's how we've been really taking a lot of testimony in.
Yep, great. Thank you very much. Thank you, committee. Okay, uh, next item is, um, consent agenda. Item A, authorize a performance bonus in the amount of three thousand dollars for the town administrator. Item B, approval of special events listed on the attachment as conditioned by department comments. And item C, uh, common victular for seaside scoops and grill located a hundred Main Street, previously mixed main scoop.
If I may, can we, uh, do item C separately? I'll need to abstain from that.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve items A and B as present, uh, as presented?
Second.
Second.
Motion by Anne Marie, second by Jared. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? It's unanimous. Is there a motion on item C?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Jared. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, abstentions?
One.
One, Anne Marie. Abstention. Next. Review of motions for town meeting articles, recommendations, assignment of articles to board members.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like to talk about Article Two of the special.
Well, we're gonna, uh, we're, I thought we'd do that under the special warrant, but we can do it now.
Yeah, cause I think at this, I think at this point, I, I mean, in my opinion, I think we should withdraw or re- remove Article Two from the special town meeting one after the outreach we did last week and last Thursday night. It was, it's just still a lot of unanswered questions and I think-
I totally agree.
So I think, um-
I think we'll do that under item eleven.
Remove an Article Two from the special.
Yeah, finally, let's then execute the, the special warrant.
Yeah.
We'll remove it then. Um, I, I think it makes sense. I think the discussion at the ConCon was very good. And, um, I think it makes sense to, um, hold off until we have complete answers. Sir, I, um, do we wanna go through with some, I didn't get any, um, requests for anyone to do specific articles. So I don't know if we wanna go through that tonight or, um, if we wanna wait till next week and have people send me and then we can talk about it next week.
If it's designated planning board, we don't need to add additional language, do we?
No, and actually, Marlene's been working on the handbook and been adding some of the comments for the articles, so the initial comments. So, um, so we'll have, I think we'll have a better idea next week if there has to be anything additional or if there'll be sufficient comments and, um, I think it'll be a little bit easier, once we have a more, a better draft of the handbook.
Yes, I will circulate another draft of the handbook around tomorrow. What I need for the handbook tonight are your recommendations.
Okay. So you want us to go through each of the articles and do, so I'm gonna, um, can we like move Article Eleven forward and finalize the, like, let's, let's, let's finalize the, the annual and special warrants for the May sixth town meeting.
Motion to move the number eleven out of order.
We don't need to vote that, do we? Just consensus, remove, to discuss Article Eleven. Okay.
But I believe I have to recuse myself from the discussion.
For the finalized annual and special warrants?
For Article Eleven.
Item eleven.
Item eleven.
Moving on the agenda.
Oh, I thought you were talking about Article Eleven.
MJ, you keep saying article.
I'm sorry. I, I, I'm misspeaking myself all over the place tonight. So, no, we're moving to Item Eleven on the agenda, finalize and execute annual and special warrant. So now we know what exactly-
Point of order. Is that what you're saying, you're moving it?
Yes, it's a point of order. Okay. Um, and then I'll take a motion to, um, approve the special warrant, uh, with-
One article only.
With, uh, Article One only.
Motion to approve the special town meeting one, um, to include one article and to remove draft Article Number Two, which is the Southside Fire Station, Article Ninety-seven article.
Motion by Peter.
Second.
Second by Anne Marie. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the motion for the annual is to approve the warrant as presented?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
For the motion, uh, approve, approve the warrant for the annual town meeting for articles one through twenty-eight?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Peter, make this second by Jared. Any further, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, abstentions? Okay, so warrants, we will sign the warrants tonight before we leave. Okay. Now, let me get to my, um, handbook. All right, so, um-
Page fifty-one.
Yep. We'll start with, uh, special town meeting relative to the ISWAM. The motion is, uh, to move that the town appropriate one million nine hundred seventeen thousand dollars for the purposes of the article and to meet the appropriation to transfer that amount from ISWAM retained earnings. Is there, um, any discussion on that article or is there a motion to recommend approval?
So a motion to recommend approval of special town meeting one, Article One.
Is there a second? Motion by Peter, second by Jared. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, abstentions? It's unanimous. Next is the Article, um, One, which is the, um, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to recommend approval of Article One?
Designated as essential? Cause we're going down and reading.
Yeah, let's do him in his one vote, I think. Unless you wanna do him that, that way.
I guess figure why we'll go in and read.
Okay. Okay, motion to recommend approval of Article One and designate it as an essential article. Motion is made by Peter. Is there a second? Second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? It's unanimous. Article Two is town budget.
Motion to positive, positive, recommend positively and to designate as essential.
Motion by Peter. Second by Melissa. Designate essential. Is there any discussion? This is, I, I like to make the motion to recommend approval.
Okay.
That, that's kind of-
Okay.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, abstentions? It's unanimous. Okay. Three is the sewer budget.
Motion to recommend approval of Article Number Three and designate it as essential.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Melissa. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Abstentions, it's unanimous. Article Four is the ISWAM budget.
Motion to recommend approval and designate it as an essential article.
Motion by Peter. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jared. I'll give it, any discussion?
Either way.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? It's unanimous. Could probably save a lot of time by seeing that they all, we, we'll do the essentials first. Okay, uh, next is-
Article Five is capital outline.
Article is five.
Capital budget.
Yeah, is this, is this one have the bleachers in it?
So if the bleachers are on the list, I will, but we forgot to put it in the total up in the motion, so I will correct that in the version you get tomorrow. So the, the dollar amount listed will be thirty thousand more.
Okay. So a motion to recommend approval of Article Five with the correct, correction of the motion and designate it as essential.
Yes, so moved.
Seconding.
Motion by Peter, second by Jared, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, abstentions? It's unanimous. Okay. Six is recommendations of reports and committees.
Motion to recommend approval of Article Six.
Is there a second?
Seconding.
Second by Jared.
And I think through the chair. Since we did remove Article Two of the special town meeting warrant, maybe this is where we can ask the Southside Fire Station Committee to give a report on how, where they're at, you know, to that way.
Yeah, I did discuss that with the chief, to, to make a report to explain what's been happening so people will be aware.
Isn't it required, didn't, isn't it-
It's not required.
Not required?
But, yeah, I, he, I, I did talk to him about making sure to give a report to explain like what we've been doing for land and what the next steps are and that we plan on coming back in the fall. So, so far we have essentials as one, two, three, four, and five. So now we're on seven, six, seven.
I think we have a motion for six to approve it.
Uh, I did have a motion and second by Jared. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, abstentions? It's unanimous. Okay. Seven is CPC feasibility, which is a hundred fifty thousand for the feasibility study for outdoor recreation areas and opens-
Motion to approve Article, recommend approval of Article Number Seven.
Is there a second?
Seconding.
Motion by Peter, second by Jared. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? It's unanimous. Article Eight.
Also community preservation.
Is community preservation to raise and appropriate the sum of five hundred thousand for the construction of an all-wheel park and to redesign the softball field at the Veterans Community Memorial Center and to transfer five hundred thousand from open space reserves.
Motion to move approval of Article Number Eight.
Recommend approval of Article Eight. Is, uh, there a second?
Seconding.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, abstentions? It's unanimous. Article Nine is CPC historic preservation. Is the roof for, um, the Hoxsey Schools, a hundred thirty-five thousand requested from Annie's pal, Anna's pals. Is there a motion to recommend approval?
So moved.
Motion by Jared, second by Melissa. Is there any discussion? I will say there was some discussion about this at the finance committee. They asked some questions about, you know, what would happen if they couldn't raise their money and we said that there was a reburder. I kind of explained that, so I, I think it's good to get this done because it preserves the building, so, yeah. Okay, uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, abstentions? It's unanimous. Next is Article Ten is eighty thousand dollars from Community Preservation Committee for, um, affordable housing to fund, you know, design of affordable housing and feasibility at Nine Sandwich Road to transfer eighty thousand dollars from Affordable Housing Reserves.
Motion to approve, um, possibly to move approval of Article-
Recommend approval.
Recommend approval.
Motion to recommend approval, uh, by Peter. Is there a second?
Seconding.
Second by Jared. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, abstentions?
One.
One, cause that's the one. Four, zero, one. Anne Marie. Next is Article Eleven.
Recom- motion to recommend approval of Article Eleven.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Melissa. Is there any discussion?
I need a coffee.
Seeing, it's not nine o'clock yet. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Pause.
Abstention.
Oh, another abstention, okay. Just gonna have a pencil. Four, zero, one, Anne Marie. Number twelve is CPC operating budget. Uh, this is seventy-five thousand for administrative and operating expenses for CPC.
In on a roll, Peter.
Yeah.
Motion to recommend approval of Article Twelve.
Is there a second? Second by Melissa. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? It's unanimous. Article thirteen.
Motion to recommend approval of Article Thirteen and to designate as essential.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Jared. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? It's unanimous.
Article Fourteen is the capital stabilization fund. Uh, motion to recommend approval of Article Fourteen and to designate as essential.
Is there a second?
Seconding. Jared, go.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any abstentions? Opposed, it is unanimous. Okay. Fifteen is Human Services. Twenty thousand dollars.
Motion to recommend approval of Article Fifteen.
Is there a second?
Seconding.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? It's unanimous. Number sixteen.
Motion to recommend approval of Article Sixteen.
Is changing the born cultural council from eleven to five. Motion by Peter. Is there a second?
Seconding.
Jared, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? It's unanimous. Okay. Good thing this is not a Zoom meeting.
That would do it on a blanket.
Those are rough. Those are rough. Okay, Article seventeen is oh, deleting references to thirty, parentheses, thirty-one days and replacing the same with thirty, thirty days in all the bylaws.
Motion to recommend approval of Article seventeen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
This one might be highly controversial. I'm not sure. I'm sorry.
Seventeen?
Never say never.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions, it's unanimous. Eighteen amendment, bylaw amendment for capital outlay definition.
Motion to recommend approval of Article eighteen.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Jared.
You're saying we should make it essential?
Any discussion?
You're saying we should make it essential?
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions, it's unanimous. Nineteen is bylaw amendment, wetland protection consultant fees.
Recommend, motion to recommend approval of Article nineteen.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions, it's unanimous. Twenty.
Motion to recommend approval of Article number twenty.
Second.
Oh, to allow Bino. Motion by Peter, second by Jared. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thirty-two.
Abstentions?
And twenty-four. Said aye, when I thirty-two and twenty-four.
Article twenty-one, traffic and internal circulation.
Motion to approve, recommend approval of Article twenty-one.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Jared. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions, it's unanimous. Twenty-two is a zoning bylaw.
Motion to recommend approval of Article twenty-two.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Jared. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions, it's unanimous. Twenty-three, zoning bylaw, interim egress, egress control.
Motion to recommend approval of Article twenty-three.
Second.
Motion by Peter, Peter, second by Jared. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, it's unanimous. Article twenty-four. Which is zoning bylaw, um, allowable uses.
Motion to recommend approval of Article twenty-four.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Jared. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions, it's unanimous. Article twenty-five, accessory dwelling.
Motion to recommend approval of Article twenty-five.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions, it's unanimous. Article twenty-six. This is the permanent easement for, this is the permanent easement? No, this is the easement, these are the easements for the bike path.
Easements for the bike path. And I have an updated motion for you for this one.
Motion to recommend approval of Article twenty-six.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Jared. Is there any discussion? I just want to note in some of the discussions that I've heard that the, the permanent easements are really from the railroad, right? And the state.
Yes.
And that all the other easements are temporary construction easements just along, so that, to allow the grading and all that other stuff, so.
And we do have, we, there will be a map in the back of the book that shows the four temporary construction easements, the permanent railroad easement, and the license from Army Corps.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions, it's unanimous. Article twenty-seven.
Motion to.
This is, this is for the, is this the one that for the easements, for the permanent easements for the?
This is the police station, majority easement?
This is to authorize chapter ninety-seven.
No.
No.
No, I'm sorry. It's for special legislation.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, sorry. I'm totally sorry for misleading myself this evening. But we did speak with, um, Dan, uh, David Viera about this and if we get it to him, it'll be approved quickly, so that's good. So, motion by Peter, right?
Confirm Article twenty-seven, yes.
Yep. Second.
Second.
By Jared. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions, it's unanimous. And twenty-eight is the easement for
Sepulveda.
System on Monument Avenue.
Motion to approve Article twenty-eight.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions, it's unanimous.
I don't think any Articles are contingent.
Not this year.
No. So, we've designated, what did you, one, two, three, four, five, thirteen, and fourteen? Is that what it was?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that right? Did Finance Committee vote those last night? Yeah, or they voted?
They voted to recommend but not essentials. I don't remember. I don't think they voted essentials.
No, they didn't. Yeah, so, I don't know if they're meeting before town meeting, but, um, that, that, that should be put on a, like, pre-town meeting thing 'cause they're both supposed to vote, we're both supposed to vote. We've executed the more, um, warrants and then Article twelve, discuss annual. Item twelve, oh my gosh. Item twelve, discuss annual goals for town administrator. I'm gonna start calling these Articles on our agenda. So, I, you know, is this kind of a new thing for us to talk about in terms of, um, like, the goals at this time? We've had, we've done the goals, the charter goals, um, that we, you know, we talk about generally at our, by the charter, we have to set some fiscal year goals for the town administrator and have them give the town administrator a time during the year to do them. And so, we had, um, set strategic plan, prioritize focused areas last August and, um, I just want to clarify that we are, we don't have any changes to those strategic focus areas. And, and I, I thought about what, and we did get some, some ideas that, you know, confidential work product ideas from Marlene. I want to talk about, um, how these goal, how we are getting, we're setting these goals now. I look at these as things kind of related to the evaluation. Like, these are the things, uh, I look at it as things that we should be talking to Marlene about, you know, to improve your performance, or these are the things we feel would give you a better evaluation. And I, I don't know if that's the wrong idea, because I don't want to create a whole nother set of goals. Like, we've set out goals for.
Yeah.
Operating, you know, for the operating, the best practice, implement sixty-five, revise financial policy, policies and procedures for marijuana, continuing progress in the CWMP, and I'm just kind of, you know, the major building projects and the future planning initiatives. So, I, I, these goals, we, we set out. And so, I think those are goals. And I, I, I think there's other things that we could be talking about as, as priorities, but we had some things in the evaluation, like, um, a review of the financial plan or like more reviewing of the financial plan. And, um, and there was a suggestion about working towards a GFOA budget. There were suggestions about focusing energy on creating new avenues to community engagement, Marlene attending at more town events. And I, these were comments that were made in the evaluation and I think it's important for Marlene to know whether or not she should be putting a lot of time and energy in that to get a better evaluation or, or not. I mean, because I don't know if these goals that we're setting are tied for things that she's supposed to be working on in the next year of her contract to when we're gonna evaluate her again, or if we're creating a whole nother set of goals. Where, there were some ideas thrown out, but I don't know that we want to add anything to what she's already trying to do. And I don't know how anyone feels about that. I don't know how Marlene feels about that. What, what goals, what are, what is the purpose of these goals?
Well, we didn't, but the evaluation, we didn't, we took out evaluating.
Goals.
Goals, correct?
Yes.
Right. So, the goal discussion. I'm not, I'm, I'm, there's a disconnect for me here.
Yeah, me too. That's what I'm saying.
So.
That's what I'm saying.
I think the question is, should we, and I'm going on past experience with, you know, evaluating the superintendent and how the whole educator evaluation piece came into play. One of the things we did evaluate the superintendent on was a, uh, a personal goal, a personal objective, right? In, in your role as the town administrator. I think that's what might, you might be getting at, which respects to connecting the eval criteria that we evaluate.
Right.
With, um, you know.
Something we'd like to see approved that would be reflected in the evaluation next year's po, as a positive.
Whether that's one professional goal.
I don't know, so, 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 we're in the wrong track. Yeah, okay.
It's, it's, it's not evaluation.
So.
Go ahead.
This is, um, this is actually very clearly defined in our contract together. And, and I think maybe, um, you know, maybe the contract lang, maybe the contract language isn't great. But, but the whole, but the contract language that the Select Board and I signed reads, "The Select Board and the Town Administrator shall define the goals and objectives which they determine to be necessary for the proper operation of the town and the attainment of the Board's policy objectives and shall further establish a general priority among those goals and objectives which shall be reduced to writing. The goals shall generally be attainable within the time limits specified and within the annual operating and capital budgets and appropriations provided by the town."
That's what this is.
That's what this is.
This is not, this is not relative to eval.
Okay.
Do with.
The eval, that's what I know.
So, we have, how do we, how do we dovetail that with the, the, the goals that we have established?
Well, so, that's essentially what the goals are that we already have established. We, this is just reiterating, adding to, or deleting. Because these are goals that are supposed to be set for.
So, so, we, when we put together our policy and our instrument, we tried to address it. And what we said was, "The goal-setting meeting is to be specific to the goals and objectives that the Town Administrator shall be individually responsible and accountable for," which isn't a whole lot. Like, I need to work together with almost everybody. But, that, that's an aside. So, shall be individually responsible and accountable for per section four dash two of the Charter. These goals and objectives are distinct from the Board's annual townwide goals referenced in section three dash three of the Charter, which shall be developed through a separate process and established by September one of each year.
So, what happened was originally, I believe in the first year, we ended up doing them both at the retreat or something, or thereabouts, 'cause we were late doing your.
The, so, all the goals so far have been set at the retreats and they've kind of been like a mishmash of both of those sections of the Charter, which is, is fine. I'm okay with doing that. I just want you to know that's not, that's not how it's written. It's not how it's written.
So, there was a lot going on that first year. Like, you got dumped on.
You think?
And so, like, getting to the retreat was hard enough. And so, when we ended up setting goals, we set all of them. Here you are, basically. And they kind of got intermingled, like she said. And then the next year, we were like, oh, well, we did them all at the retreat last year, kind of thing, and it carried over. So, but it's not the way it's written.
And I'm okay with the, I'm okay with our practice. I am. I'm totally okay with our practice. I just want everybody to know, you know.
But I agree, I, I agree with you.
It's just not how it's written.
I don't mean to cut anybody off. There's not a lot here that you're gonna set goals for specifically for you. I mean.
Like, show up for work every day.
Show up for work every day, yeah. I mean, there's, there's really not. I mean, when we go into the retreat and we set all your goals for the year, for the town, it's not supposed to be the same as these. But what else are you gonna be, that is that specific for you, that doesn't involve anybody else? There's really not a lot to it. And I agree with that.
So, so, we set, we, and I, this is draft, but I'm pretty sure that, we don't even actually have this posted, I don't think, on the website anyplace where it's, it is as a draft someplace.
Yeah.
But, um, so, we had under strategic initiative one, best practice, customer face, engaging government, implement Office three sixty-five migration to the cloud, which is, we're still working on, but.
After town meeting.
Yes. No, but that's still, I mean, in these goals, we're talking about goals now, we're talking about goals that we set last August, last September, and we're still working on. And maybe this, this review of goals is like, where are we and do we want to add anything else? Or are we just gonna focus on these things? Complete HR policy update, you're still working on that, but that's in progress. That's still a good goal.
Yep.
Curbside plowing, pick up road acceptance policies. Those are, they're done, right?
Yeah.
Those are done, so we're, we're good.
But again, those are all like.
That was actually who the Select Board, that was a who the Select Board.
But I did a lot of work on those. I'm just gonna say.
Comprehensive overhaul of the town's website and strength, strengthen onsite service per, that's still a goal. It was a medium goal, but that was still a goal. Evaluating the option of bringing IT services back in-house. I think you're, you're working on that, but I think you're not gonna do that and you're gonna, but we're gonna get a proposal.
I'm bringing a proposal to you next week.
Yeah, yeah. So, assessing long-term needs and resources needed by DPW.
That's definitely not the most recent version.
Yeah, so.
We have one version that is online.
Where is that? I could not, I could not find it, which comes to strengthen website.
It's under the Select Board website, uh, page.
I looked there today.
And it's on the left-hand side under, on your.
What's the date of it?
Uh, August of twenty-three.
August fifteen, twenty twenty-three, is it Mark draft?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is. That is where I got this from.
Is that that one?
Yes.
I apologize, that's our fault.
No, no, it's nobody's fault. I'm just, and I, I'm not, I think we did, I, I think we did leave something about DPW. It's a multi-year medium goal, so revised financial policy, we're still working on, we're in the process of finalizing that now, but we're making good progress.
Yep.
Policies and procedures for marijuana, we are like diligently working on that.
We are. We are.
Continued work on the CWMP, the water infrastructure funds investigate, those were the Barnstable County options and create general bylaw for the RMA. Uh, major building pro- projects, resolve significant constructions issues with the police station, bring a plan for the fire station. I mean, I-
That one hurts, doesn't it?
I think we're making, you know, it's, the wheels of government move very, very slowly. I-
We are moving fast.
Well-
Getting a lot done. I mean, some of those have crossed off the list.
For government, we are moving fast.
Super fast.
We need to run a spell check, and if you look underneath, I think me and this felt wrong.
Yeah, yeah, there are some, well, it's a draft, so we'll-
It does say draft on it.
Yeah. So, I, I'm, I am comfortable with leaving the goals as they are. If Marlene says, "This is something that I really want," if you have something-
I like Mr. York's idea about getting rid of some committees.
He raised some committees, yeah.
I'll take his suggestion. I'm just thinking.
I have to say, though, you and I are the ones that complain the most, I think, about having too many committees. Was it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, it wasn't you.
I don't com- yeah, it wasn't me.
I think it was you and Judy.
I don't think it should be.
Oh, maybe it was you, yes. Judy and I, yes.
I think, I, yeah, I, I don't think any additional things should be added, honestly, because-
Not at this juncture, I don't think so.
Hmm, right.
We have, we have August when we all said-
I mean, I think there's other things that you're working on that aren't on this li-
Of course.
I mean, there's a lot of other things that are not on this list.
Of course.
But I think diluting the list at this point-
I can't handle it.
Yeah. I think we have a list. I think we should just continue doing what we're doing. And if, uh, the contract with you, if our contract says that we will annually do it, I think that we could take a vote to affirm the goals that we have established and to continue working diligently on those goals. Is that good?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm so moving.
We can't keep adding, I mean-
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
We'll, we'll never get anything accomplished if we just keep-
Piling.
Piling.
It's just not gonna happen.
And so, I-
But I think we should, I think a good-
That draft is a pretty good pile.
I think we should go back, though, at some point and look at high, medium.
Yes.
What, what accomplished take off.
It can be done in August when you guys sit down.
Yeah, I think that's, I think, I think this is a good check-in point.
It is. I agree.
I think it's a good check-in point. I think we're making a lot of progress. I think we established that a lot of the goals that we were setting were not gonna be done in a year. They were gonna be multi-year goals. But there are s- one-year goals that we've made significant progress on. I mean, and we've done all, we've done some other things, so-
It doesn't mean that we have to add something in its place.
That's correct.
Because then we move a medium piece to a high priority piece, right? That's, that should be-
I think there's, um-
Something existing may move to high.
Right.
Something else has been accomplished.
So, anyway, we have a motion to, whenever I said, to continue, like, to affirm the goals that we've set.
Continue to affirm.
Is there any-
Second.
Discussion, this is-
We didn't have a second yet.
No, I have, I've motioned, I think you seconded.
Oh, I, I, I said so moved, but I, I will take a second.
You said so moved, so I said second.
Is there any further discussion?
Can't remember at this point.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? I think it's good. I think we're, we're making progress and we've gotta stay focused on what we're doing, so. All right, let me find the, um, uh, policy, second reading for financial policies.
I, I'd like to ask the table this, only until next week or something, because it's not redlined, so I don't even know what's been changed.
I don't think anything has been changed.
Nothing's been, been changed.
Not from the first-
No, it's only, we had a first reading.
So, I remember the first reading, yes. I wasn't sure if there's anything-
I'm gonna say-
The red line, no, wasn't.
Something was changed, so, okay. So, there hasn't been any changes since the first reading.
No, no. I will, um, I'm, we can move it to a third reading, or we can just postpone it. It's late, and-
I say we move it to a third reading.
Okay.
Yeah, move it to a third reading, that's fine. I can be, I just wanna make sure, 'cause I'm like, not gonna assume it's not-
Who motioned?
I will motion to move to a third.
And, uh-
Second.
Uh, Anne Marie was second. The only thing that changed, I think, uh, in this was the sewer commissioners voted some changes of language. So, that will be incorporated in this.
I have to get those from Matt.
Yeah, okay. It was as presented except for one piece of it, so, yeah, so that should be included for the third reading. Will do. And then the other thing that we talked about is maybe like highlighting some places where there were benchmarks included, like, both, like, just, you know, so, yeah, so that would be good. So, um, motion by Jared, second by Anne Marie, to move the financial policy to a third reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? It's unanimous. Town Administrator's report.
We will be conducting some geotechnical investigations behind the community building right here to understand the soil characteristics prior to beginning any design work that may be funded at the Maytown meeting for a new all-wheel park. The test pit work will be weather-dependent but could be, begin as early as this Thursday. The onsite work is expected to be less than one full day. We will be working cooperatively with DEP as they conduct an audit of the cleanup work that we undertook, um, at the community building to properly address historical soil contamination. The project is achieving very good results, and we are still on track to permanently close the site, hopefully by the end of the year.
Awesome.
The milling of the Bourne Rotary is scheduled to begin next Monday, April fifteenth, and last for two nights. Limited-
Bourne South Rotary?
Listen-
They're all Bourne Rotaries. I hate to do that.
Bourne South Rotary.
I just want people to understand when you read that-
The Rotary project that we're doing.
They don't think another Rotary is getting repaved, that's all.
Limited temporary markings will go down after milling, and paving is scheduled to begin the following Monday on April tw- twenty-second. Paving is also expected to last two nights. Permanent paving markings are scheduled to be installed the week of April twenty-nine, along with both permanent and temporary signs to communicate the new traffic pattern. Some of the larger permanent signs are still in fabrication and will be installed later, but Masthat does intend on providing the information on temporary signs in the meantime. Rumble strips and flashing beacons will follow the permanent markings. All the work will be conducted at night between eight PM and five AM. There will be a detour in place during paving for Trow Bridge and Sandwich Road. Masthat will share information about the detour with the town, and we will communicate that through the website, the Police Department, and the DPW when we receive it. Masthat will also utilize their message boards and advanced safety signs to alert drivers to the milled road conditions. For the new Canal Area Bridges Replacement Project, Masthat will be holding a virtual public meeting on April twenty-fifth. More information for that and to register is on the town's website. And Masthat will also be hosting an in-person open house on May thirteenth at the community building with sessions both in the afternoon and evening. We will share Masthat's promotional materials when we receive them.
Thank you. I will just, um, note that the, um, meetings with Masthat, um, the sort of stakeholder meetings during the South Bourne South Rotary Project have been like, doing every two weeks. The project has been running sort of ahead of schedule. I think they're gonna have it all done before Memorial Day, so that they won't have to do it again in the fall. Um, we're hoping, but it won't curse ourselves, but, um, the communication has been really good. And they have made a, a good effort to, um, make sure that the word gets out about how the Rotary is gonna be changed and getting, um, information out to the public, so I think that was really positive.
It is confusing when you come around by, uh, Sandwich Road. It all of a sudden gets whoa.
Yeah, it's weird now because there's new paving and y- it, there's-
Well, and when they just had the barrels there. It was weird.
It's good that it's gonna be moving along.
Yeah, it is moving quick.
It's good that the product's moving well.
Okay. All right, uh, next item is, uh, minutes?
How did we have any minutes?
Twenty nineteen, you and I, we had to restate.
I was-
Yeah, you, we both missed it.
I was, I don't even see it in the packet here. Did I miss it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's there.
I did miss it.
Except for the financial policy.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Anne Marie, second by Melissa. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstentions?
Abstention.
Three, zero, two. Peter and Jared.
God, I missed that.
Uh, community reports.
Yes, um, earlier today, uh, Amber Marie, the Town Administrator, and myself, were at the, uh, the, the Canal Bridge discussion. And, I don't know, maybe it's just me, but it was a lot of information thrown at us in, a little less than two hours to absorb. Um, in fact, I'll have something written up at some point, and Anne Marie and I can compare notes, but, um, the Commonwealth will be giving us, sending us the link to the, to the, um, present PowerPoint that we had today, and once we get it, we'll make sure it gets sent out to everybody. But, uh, um, I'm not prepared to talk about it.
Yeah. I mean, I think these meetings are informational to the Board and the stakeholders before the public meeting, so, you know, we're in, we're, the public meetings obviously are gonna have a lot of information in them, so we'll see how it goes.
I just have a quick thing.
Yep.
Do- Joint Base Cape Cod, civilian, we had the, like, meeting, the, um, Civilian Advisory Council is having a Memorial Day observance at Otis Memorial Park, May twenty-third. It starts at two. Um, I was looking at our minutes here. Not a ton else, let's see, um, just real quick. Um, it says, uh, Army Aviation Battalion is back from deployment, so you'll see an uptick in operations around Joint Base Cape Cod. Upper Cape Tech is hosting, um, that was actually just, was that was today, right? The night, the Advisory Council meeting on the bridges, was that?
That was today.
Yeah, that was today. And, uh, yeah, that should do it, I think, from that. That's it.
What was the date of the, um?
Uh, May twenty-third, Memorial Day observance. It starts at two.
Okay. Correspondence?
Uh, Select Board correspondence for April ninth, twenty twenty-four. Item A, DP, DEP letter, demolition area one environmental monitoring. B, one ninety-eight North Road waterways application. C, sixty-six Lake Drive wall and walkway replacement. D, Xfinity channel changes spring. E, Xfinity, Xfinity March channel changes and payment of subscriber fee. And F, Talent Bank, Jay Grohl, Veterans Graves Officer.
And we also had, um, a postcard from, uh, Bourne Historical Society. They are having a Blooming Together Art Project opening and reception Thursday, April eleventh, from five to seven PM at the museum's Adoptxit. Refreshments will be served. Um, uh, you're supposed to RSVP to the Bourne Historical Society at Comcast dot net, but they invited all Select Board members to attend.
If I can go back real quick, I just don't wanna forget Kathleen Kovah from the, um, her community outreach there committee. Natural Resources Department's getting local, local notoriety, and they presented at the Cape Cod Natural History Conference. It's, uh, now Mass Audubon wants to come and see Camp Edwards' conservation efforts. Uh, being asked to present at the Northeast Association of Fish and Wildlife. Just wanted to make sure I have that. Thank you for going back.
Uh, next meeting date is next week, April sixteenth. April seventeenth is the moderators' meeting. April thirtieth will be our legislative de- delegation, and May sixth is town meetings will be town meeting.
Do we have the time on the moderators' meeting?
It should be like three AM.
PM?
What day is that?
The seventeenth.
Wednesday, the seventeenth.
And we're meeting tomorrow at three, right?
Yes.
Yes.
We are meeting at executive session with the county commissioners at-
Nine thirty.
In the morning.
Yeah.
And at three PM for a marijuana workshop.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Sign something.